Intent and purposes of this code. Two, the special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of existing and future land uses on adjacent property and the surrounding area. Three, the special land use shall not change the essential character or the surrounding area. Four, the special land use shall not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses, activities, materials, or equipment which will be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of persons or property through the excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, or glare. And five, the special land use shall be required to be served by public sanitary sewer and water supply systems when available, or other systems approved by the Health Department, and served adequately by other essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, drives, sidewalks, police and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, and/or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of a proposed special use shall be able to provide adequately all such services. Further, the special use shall not place demands on public services and facilities in excess of current capacity. So I laid out my report, kind of the criteria by which a site plan would be judged. Again, we'll expect a full site plan at some point in the future. My comments on the concept as provided were that landscape plans have not been supplied, but the site will require front, rear, and side planting strips and interior planting spaces. Any dumpsters will also need to be screened appropriately. Sidewalks are not included, however, they do not presently exist on this site or the adjacent sites. There is sidewalk on the other side of Michigan Avenue from this site, though. Two barrier-free parking spaces are required in the layout that was provided to us. Now, if the parking lot changes, that might change as well. A stormwater management plan will be required, which is able to detain all runoff generated by a 100-year event. An onsite system may release into the city stormwater system at the rate of a 10-year event. But a metric plant and lighting details have not been included, and lighting should be directed downwards to reduce light pollution and should not extend beyond the property lines. Sinage plans have not been included, but will be required to conform the city signage regulation. And final floor plans will need to be approved by local and state fire marshals. As a special use permission request, the planning commission may place additional requirements upon an applicant if they feel it necessary to preserve the public interest and the interest of nearby properties. I published a notice in the August 21st edition of the Daily Reporter, and I mailed notices directly to all property owners and occupants within 300 feet of this site. I have not received any comments. I understand Chairwoman Miller was contacted by a member of the public. I've provided some model language that can be used if a motion is made to approve this plan, but otherwise, I'm able to answer any questions you have of me at this time, and we have the applicants in the audience that can answer any questions that you have of them.
The comment that I received, Dr. Becker is concerned that people will come into his parking lot and smoke their marijuana because it would be right next door, and also that it will affect his property values. Would the petitioner like to come forward? Please go to the podium. State your name and address for the clerk.
Paul Schmitz. The address is 55 South Michigan.
No, where you live.
I live at 4800 Hawk Hollow Drive East, Bath, Michigan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What would you like to share with us?
So, the plan presented would be a redevelopment of the house currently located on the lot. We would make it a two-unit facility with an office and retail component, depending on the user. We don't have a user in mind yet, as well as the dispensary. We are currently working on the plan to add additional parking, so I do believe the parking shouldn't be an issue at all. As far as the property value goes, I don't think it should have any impact on that as well. Sorry, excuse me. So I think it should be positive for all the surrounding areas. We are looking to develop some land behind it as well. We own the land directly behind it. That was the former trailer park, so we are looking to make significant investments into the city, building some mixed-use or housing behind it. We're working on those plans as well.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of him?
I have one. So on the site plan, it says that it has a setback 48.6 feet. Is that correct? There isn't. Just so that...
That the distance that indicated the building will be setback?
Yeah. Is that correct down here? I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that the applicant, there's ITC setback on that property, or there should be. I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
That's more just a, you might not have known that.
No.
It's not a city ordinance, that's an ITC easement.
Okay.
Which I think it's 80 feet on either side of the center line, and I know it's...
Right around there.
...poles around there, so that'd be pushed back significantly, so this is probably not where it sit.
I, that'll be, I know ITC's got that 80-foot vegetation easement. I don't know if that applies to buildings. ITC is an electrical transmission company. The transmission lines that run across that property...
Yeah.
...have an easement that they own.
I know the poles were identified on the survey. I'm not sure if the easement was on there or not. I'll have to double-check that. I appreciate that, yeah, thank you.
I'm not sure what the easement would cover. I know for purposes of preventing trees from falling on it, they want vegetation cleared by, but I don't know if that applies to buildings as well, but that's something that you'll want to...
We'll look into for sure, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Jeff. Anyway, is there anyone in the audience who has any comments pro? Okay. Okay. Is there anyone against? Okay. Sir, would you come up and state your name and your address?
My name is Tim Meyer. My address is 93 South Michigan Ave. And I also have a letter here from Ann Lidle, who is at 83 South Michigan Ave, and she's 80 years old, she's not really capable of coming in. And what she said was, "My family has owned this property since 1934. We had no say on whether they could come in, cut all the trees down along our road, but I hope we do have some say as to whether we have to have a marijuana retail establishment on our street. We seem to already have such many establishments in Coldwater, and it would seem it isn't necessary to have another one on South Michigan." And as far as that easement, it is 85 feet from the poles back. I know it's 85 feet because they cut every one of my trees all the way back to 85 feet. And then also, you cannot make any changes in the buildings until you have filed a request with ITC and they have okayed it. So any construction or any changes in the buildings that's there has to be done. And as far as any plantings, there really aren't any plantings you can put in back to that 85 feet, except for maybe low-lying shrubs or something. Anything that's woody cannot be within 10 feet of the line. And then to the rest of the 85 feet, there's very few things that you're allowed to put in as far as plantings, which if you notice and you go along South Michigan Ave, they completely clear-cut us all the way back to 85 feet. So, no. We got enough running down through there as it is right now. We don't need the additional problems and stuff that we would have with having another establishment of this type on the street.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay?
Of him?
Uh-huh. Now, do I close this to have discussion? I can't remember.
You can.
Okay. If there, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I'm closing the public hearing. Planning Commission.
Well, I'm the one who raised the question with Dean about the residential properties in this commercial district. So if it is a true statement that this particular property, one of them, has been owned since 1934, that's before the zoning existed.
Right.
So my concern was, were those residences purchased with the understanding that they were in a commercial zoning or not? So that's my one concern, that zoning was imposed upon a residence where they wouldn't have had that choice in making the purchase.
Look on the website, we couldn't see when they were purchased. Purchased after zoning, but current owner would question that pretty easily.
Yeah, we could look that up in our database pretty easily. You know, there are certainly residents up and down Michigan Ave, particularly on that east side. There's one at 25, there's this one at 55, and then I think there are probably four further south from here. Now, I don't know how, without going to the website right now, I don't know when they were purchased or whatnot. The way we wrote our ordinance, we required the 500 feet from properties zoned exclusively for residential use, so there were R3, A1, A2, A3. We understand that there are residential uses within commercial and industrial zoning We do mail directly to every owner and occupant within 300 feet. That's required by state law. Some of the marijuana grow facilities we've reviewed in the last few months were within 500 feet of residential uses as well, but those were zoned industrial at the time, so... When we were crafting the ordinance, and this doesn't address Jessica's point about zoning being imposed upon an owner, but the assumption was that people buying into a commercial zone are kind of buying with an understanding that their neighborhood might change. Clearly, this neighborhood's changed in the last several years. There's the auto parts store, there's the factory across the street, there's Walgreens on the corner, Becker Ice Care. So it has been transitioning from kind of farmland on the periphery. Yes, that's my statement on the residences that are nearby.
That zoning change. That's the question I think she's asking, is when was the zoning changed in that area, and did they own the home before the zoning was changed?
Well, I think the zoning ordinance was in the, our first zoning ordinance was in the late 70s, so if they've owned it since the 30s, then they've clearly owned it since before then. At one point, the city didn't extend to this area, so I'm not sure exactly when the boundaries extended to encompass this land either.
What about after, though?
And I have a question. He's talking about putting mixed-use housing behind there?
Multifamily housing is allowable by special use permission in the C4 district, so that could be, it would be a public hearing similar to like, to what we're having right now, where we would notify everyone that this proposal is, this is being proposed, and then we'd have a hearing on it. Again, that's a situation where the zoning is still commercial, but in our ordinance, we allow residential and commercial districts.
Okay, but if our ordinance says no marijuana store closer than 500 feet...
That's to property zoned exclusively for residential use. So if it's a single-family neighborhood, or something's owned for multifamily exclusively and not commercial uses, or industrial uses, or other types of uses. So the, you know, the thought process being, people moving into those areas that are zoned exclusively for residential use shouldn't have to anticipate other uses moving in adjacent to them. They should have an expectation of what their neighborhood might be, but if they're moving into areas zoned for commercial or industrial use, then they should understand that they might have other, you know, uses that are not just residential.
But that's not answering my question. If he wants to put residential there, and you have a marijuana store within 500 feet, can he do that?
By ordinance, he'd be able to, if a special land use permission is granted to him, yes.
The way we wrote it, based on zoning...
Because it'd still be zoned commercial, still be zoned C4 even though it's residential.
Because residential's an allowed use.
Right.
It would be, for planning on a mixed-use, one of them would have like, almost like a live-work space.
Could you come to the podium, please?
It'd be a planned mixed-use, so it'd be a kind of a live-work type arrangement, where it would be first-floor offices, individual office suites, more divided up for small companies or single-office users. They would also be able to have an apartment on one of the upper floors.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Aaron.
It seems like this one does carry a little bit different circumstance than some of the other ones. I mean, we've got homes that were established there prior to the zoning. We are going to incur some steady traffic, probably. This new special use is probably higher traffic than most other commercial uses, and therefore, we're going to potentially have the harmonious problem with the surrounding properties that are already there, because the homes that are already there are not going to love the fact that there's continuous traffic all the time, so it's, this one just seems different than the other ones that we've had in front of us.
I think we've definitely had more people step up and actually say something about this property, and it's basically residential property saying something, so I think we have to take that into account. It's different than when we had an industrial park, and we have industrial, you know, people out there, they're making the comments. They had to have kind of expected that was going to happen. I think this is a different situation myself.
Especially since they're, you know, per the resident, they're a long time established there. If they had just moved there two years ago, I mean, it's kind of a different discussion, but...
That's my concern.
Couldn't we know how long they've been there, instead of guessing? I mean, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I asked for that information.
I agree with that.
But, and I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking on the BSA software right now, and there's no sale information.
Yeah, there's no, it's prior to 2013, it was just a quick claim, probably just cleaning up the title, but there's no sales listed, so...
It's a legitimate question. On the other hand, it is Michigan Avenue with a factory across the street, and an auto parts warehouse down the street, and Becker Ice Care, and Rite Aid, and CVS, but it's a legitimate, you know...
And there also has been trailer parks around it, and it's not going between homes, it's going between two commercial businesses now, so it's not between the other two.
But we also put, for marijuana, that it couldn't be within 500, I know it's a district, but we also put that specific provision in here on that issue. So I think, just saying, just because it's all commercial out there, I don't think this holds away down this...
It's more gray than the other three.
Yeah. So our ordinance reads that it's within 500 feet of a residential zoning district, so specifically not within 500 feet of a residence.
It is in a commercial district.
It is.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I would look for a motion to approve, and it's easier to move to approve and then vote no than it is to make the motion a negative emotion, okay?
Get it going, get it on, moving. I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit for this project.
And with what conditions?
None.
Okay.
Other than the ones Dean specified, site plan.
The ones that Dean specified?
That's part of the site plan.
That's part of the site plan.
Well, he has that in there.
Oh, you have?
I didn't actually include specific conditions.
You've got language towards it. I think that's crazy to have a, it is crazy.
That's not a condition of approval, that's just identifying that sidewalks are not included, however they presently exist across the street, you know, essentially.
What is your motion, though?
I think that's got to do with the site plan approval, I think. I agree with the special use permit, the site plan's another issue, I believe, correct?
I think that right now, we should be looking at moving, at making a motion based on the use, the marijuana retail establishment use in this location, and the general layout of the site as they've identified, understanding that parts of that site might change when it comes to us doing the special land use issue. Now, if there's anything that we see on this site right now that we think might create issues for adjacent properties that can be remedied by attaching those conditions to this approved, that'd be a good time for those, but we don't have to get into this real specifics of site planning right now, if that makes sense.
Like significant screening on the south side, or something like that.
Right.
Can we just get a legal opinion? While I'm not in favor of voting, I think I have to second the motion, because I think it's a legal issue, that if it meets all our criteria, we can't turn it down. It's this, whether, I agree with everything that's said, but I don't know legally, you can say no to this because it's fitting all the criteria.
If, now there are the five discretionary...
Yep, I get the five discretionary, but I don't know how, in my opinion, they meet the discretionary ones. Has they looked at this, I guess that's my question. Whether or not legally we are bound to approve it, because we've approved everybody else, we can't say this one's an exception, because they are the same.
If this isn't going to be approved, then I think that the reasons it's not going to be approved should be based within those general criteria for review, so I'd be specific about the concerns that might be had, and specify them within the realm of those five general criteria, whether they're harmonious with, in accordance with, the objectives, intent, and purposes of the zoning code, whether the special land use is designed, constructed, and operated and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of the existing and future land uses adjacent to there, the special land use, whether it changes the character of this site or the surrounding area, whether to be hazardous. So those are the kinds of, it's kind of reasoning I would attach to any kind of a motion, not to approve.
Well, you won't have that in the motion, because the motion's a positive motion to approve it, so if it doesn't pass, you won't have the negative reason stated. And that's my concern, I protect the city from, that's the reason, and I'm not sure, because you're in a commercial district with factories around you, that you can hang your hat on the harmonious of the major street, but...
Same reason somebody bought it for a reason, because it's going to be commercial. So why, you're telling me that they bought it knowing it's zoned commercial, now we say you've got a commercial business and they can't use it? So again, that's kind of the flip side.
I have no problem with it, no, but I'm not sure, as Jeff says, that it's the responsible thing to do.
Yeah, I don't like it.
I don't either, but...
But we've also had two people come forward on that, that are residential properties, that we've never, Jessica's question hasn't been answered yet, of when that property was bought. So the excuse of, it's, they bought into a commercial, they may not have bought into a commercial.
If they approved Becker Ice Care, we would have turned down Becker Ice Care there, because they didn't want to have a...
Marijuana's got, we specifically did not allow marijuana close to a, close to a residential district. Why did we put that in there? Because we didn't want it close to residential districts.
This is not within 500 feet of a residential district.
Well, what I'm also saying is, you guys haven't answered the question, Jessica, of when was that house bought, was it before, which I think makes a big difference. In other words, we just run right over people, and we don't care about, when they, if they had that farm or had the house there before you rezoned it, I think it is an issue. And you've got to take that into account, because people run there.
Keith might know when we did zoning, I don't know if you know off the top of your head when we instituted...
Public hearing's closer, I'm sorry, but... Well, okay, I'm sorry. Since you keep talking about when it was, and it was, but they originally bought it as part of the township, it was not until the city decided it was zoned commercial, until that point it was residential. But when they bought those properties and built the houses there, they built them as a residential neighborhood, it was not until the city annexed it to a commercial that it suddenly started to change.
Sir, we can go into our files and see what deeds we have going back that might not be within the BSA software.
We could table them, too.
You know, we have the option of tabling this.
Yep.
Yeah. I withdraw my motion, there was no support, so...
Yeah, there was the support.
No. Did you actually want me to support it?
I didn't officially do it, I would have, but I won't, I'm good with withdrawing
So then, do you need a motion to table the matter until we, so I will move to table the matter until we can answer the question about when the property was purchased, when the zoning was imposed, and those details?
That's worth, that's worth that.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this until we can find out the date the land was purchased, the time the zoning went into effect, and perhaps when it became annexed to the city.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote. No, I don't think we need to do one. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carried, so we've tabled it.
Well, I have another motion. I'd require, I made a motion, we move item four up ahead of item three, so if Jessica here could, in case the landscaping ordinance goes too long, we can...
I would agree.
So I'd make that motion, move item four up, that's okay with everybody?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move item four before our landscaping discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carried. We're going to go to the site plan for High Wire Farms.
Yep, so this is site plan review number 2103 for High Wire Farms at 363 North Willbrook Road. We had issued a special use permission to High Wire Farms last month to use this site for marijuana retail establishment, and this is their site plan for that establishment. The big notes that I have on this are that landscape plans do not include east, which is the rear yard, or south side yard plantings. I've outlined the quantities that they have proposed, as well as what our ordinance would require within my report. Sidewalks that they've planned for this site do not include ADA-compliant ramps, which just entail that they're ramped at the appropriate angle and have truncated domes. Three, that a stormwater management plan must be developed. There's a lot of stormwater issues with this site presently. We're looking at what rights the applicant has to use the pond behind Gander RV right now, and how that aligns with our current stormwater standards. Four, the site must be served by 20-foot-wide fire lanes around the building, and all radii leading to the fire lanes must be navigable by the department's largest apparatus. And five, due to the size of the site, so the erosion sediment control permits will be required. I can go into detail on anything within my report if you have any questions. We have Cody Newman and Eric Kennedy from High Wire Farms here as well.
Stormwater's a major issue. If you can't get the easements, what's your plans?
If we are not able to get the easement to utilize the existing system, the plan is to work with a civil engineer to retain that for the 100 water on-site. So we'd put a large well in, in the center of the parking lot, basically underground, maintain it underground.
There's stormwater just to the northwest of this site, too, so if they wanted to attach to the city system, that'd be the point where they could do that, and they can release at the rate of a... that'd be the point where they could do that, and they can release at the rate of a 10-year event.
And we would still need, if we do that, we'd still need additional onsite storage for the 100-year.
Yep, correct.
So you're saying they still need landscaping on the east side?
For a, for development of this size, our ordinance requires rear and side yard plantings. And so the rear, in this case, would be the east side, and the side would be the south side, as well as the north side.
Okay.
So that's what that comment was pertaining to.
And do they meet the 20-foot requirement around the building?
I don't, have you adjusted the fire lanes to account for that, Fire Marshal's recommendations?
Yes, yep, the minimum is 20 feet, and we are able to make that turn on that, behind the building there. So right now we have that.
Okay.
That was one of the big concerns with the landscaping that we had, due to the size of this lot. Currently, there are no trees on this lot, we're proposing a significant increase, obviously, in landscaping on this, as you can see on here. We looked, I mean, there's more than any other site around it, I know that's not what the ordinance says, but we've proposed quite a few trees on here to try to make that, and are worried that to get all of the required trees on that side of the property, it becomes a hazard to try to get, there's a visibility issue there as well, a security issue with that that we're worried about, as well as access. And if we have all these trees back here, it's going to be harder to be able to keep that fire lane clear and trimmed and safe over time.
Dean, which sides are you saying need to be addressed? I mean, I'm looking at this drawing, so are we talking what's on the right-hand side here?
Yeah.
Right.
That butts up to a parking lot.
Yeah.
And then the south side is the entrance drive.
Right, so it's got a North Willowbrook Road, it faces North Willowbrook Road, so the east side is technically the rear, and the south side would be a side yard.
How many plantings do they have on here, and what is the discrepancy between numbers, I guess is what I'm looking at?
So the ordinance would require a total of 27 trees, 120 shrubs. They provided 21 trees, 42 shrubs. Now that's throughout the interior plantings, as well as those north and west side plantings.
And we've, we've worked with a few landscaping companies too, to try to see what we can get, and they said that if we truly try to get 120 shrubs on this property, it's, it's going to be hard to have those survive at this point too. It's, I know it's what the ordinance is, and we're happy to try to get more in, but we're afraid that within a year or two, all of those shrubs will be, there's just not enough water and soil to properly maintain their health.
I'm not laughing at you, I'm laughing with you.
I, I think this is a great segue, but, you know, given that they're converting a parking lot into a site here, and it's bordered on two sides by drives, and on one side by a parking lot, I feel like we ought to be able to give them some alternatives here.
I mean, if we look at the, the site plan, I mean, every tree's got shrubs between it, I mean, there's no room to put any more shrubs between those trees, so I understand the concern there, and then they've got each inland island for the inland plantings, they've got a tree, and it looks like multiple of two shrubs in each one. My personal opinion is I think it's good.
Yeah.
I mean, they're converting a dilapidated parking lot to something that's going to be.
Right.
Making the city look better.
They're improving the city, certainly.
There are concerns as the trees grow, you won't be able to see your building. Obviously, with signage and that, that's always a concern.
Absolutely. We will do what we can to keep the trees trimmed along the front of the building, for sure, because that's the other thing where we don't, I mean, of course we want to have trees and increase the landscaping, there's nothing there right now, it is a parking lot, we want to increase that, but at some point, you know, by adding 120 shrubs and, I forgot, 27 trees, it becomes a forest in there, that becomes hard to see and maintain visibility of the building as well.
Is that because of the number of parking spots? That puts ballooning, it's up. And why can't it be plantings versus shrubs? Why does it have to be a green shrub, why can't it be a daylily?
Grasses.
Or something that is a lot more maintenance-free, and basically will look better in the long run.
So the, the number of parking spaces, the size of the parking lot necessitate the interior plantings? Now, the perimeter of the parking lot is what leads to those parking strips, kind of side and rear. I'll, I'll count a daylily as a shrub, I'll, I'll count basically any form of vegetation that comes across my desk as a shrub.
Is that defined in our?
Our ordinance has some recommended kind of species, but it doesn't specify every species that's allowable. Now, I've been administering this, you know, liaisoning this body for five years now, and I know that if someone brings a daylily to me, I'll say that's a shrub.
Okay.
So is the number of parking places shown here the applicant's number, or is this what we require?
Oh, this is the applicant's number, my, the way I calculated the usable, or the required parking spaces, it comes out to eight.
Our calculations came to nine, but yes, regardless, we know that parking was one of the biggest concerns on several of these, and we wanted to make sure that this was not an issue at this facility. Especially, I know there was concern too with people parking from other businesses too, so basically staff would be the furthest parking, and then, other than that, it would be for customer.
The Fire Marshal needing that circle around the building. Is that an issue?
The, I, I don't think that's necessarily an issue for the site plan, the fire lanes are 20-foot in diameter, have you done a radii, checked the radii?
We have now, we have a program, we can run that in to confirm that.
I won't. Yeah.
Reason why I ask that was because there's been other situations where we haven't, we've approved it without having it full circle. We did it out in industrial park, and I guess my comment was, is you're talking about the trees, and just if they're having a problem with it, again, it's one of those things, it's great to have everything, you know, but sometimes we impose more than what we really need. That's why I was asking if there's a problem with that.
I, yeah, I'm not, I don't want to speak for the Fire Marshal.
No, Fire Marshal, is there a problem with the, are you able to make the circle around there without problems?
That can be one of the conditions of approval, is that it meets the.
No, you're missing my whole comment, my whole comment is, we've done approvals that haven't had to go the full radius around it, we did it out in industrial park, because they didn't have room to do it. I guess that's what I'm asking, is there enough room, because you were saying something about there was a, that was, you said it wasn't compliant.
I, I understand your, your point now, that at some factories, we've allowed them to go out, most of those have a cul-de-sac at the end of them to wear the.
We did it out, we did it out in industrial, I'm just asking, is there a problem? Can you make that circle work in your design?
It's very tight around the northeast corner there. Now, it becomes a, you know, in real life, if there was a fire in an emergency and they needed to get there, obviously, what's directly to the east of it is a sea of parking lots, so could they make that in reality, yes, you know, they, but they, there's a chance they have to swing out slightly onto the parking lot directly to the east of it. We'll verify that to make for sure, but it would be tight making that one turn into the back there. Around the front, we have a pretty wide turn to go in there, and obviously, the main lanes there are well over, we have 30 feet as an average on the front portion there, so we have plenty of lane on the front side, on the back side, we have the Mino and 20 around that, but it's going to be that one turn that's going to be a little bit tricky.
Dean, I have just a theoretical question, do we, do we require all new buildings to be able to have 360? Around them, or is it just because of, why do they need fire lanes around?
I defer to the Fire Marshal on that, he reviews the Florida code.
We didn't require them on AMI, we didn't require them on, on any of these, why this one?
Well, because some of those were existing buildings.
Yeah, so for instance, the one we just saw, it didn't have a 360 around that one.
That didn't, but that was a pretty rudimentary site plan, that was just to give us kind of an idea of what was going to go on, then we'd get another site plan similar to this, where we would really hold them to some of those items.
Right, if they weren't changing their footprint, we didn't do site plans on all of them.
I can answer that, we have, I mean, we've never required it 360 on all the new builds, LD, you came around that one.
I mean, I.
It's a new store, I'm just thinking of a new store, I just, I'm just curious what the parameters are, that's what I was asking. What requires it to be 360, whereas, whereas it can be three-sided, I'm just, I know you're not Fire Marshal, so I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just curious what the requirement is.
I guess that's the reason why I was talking about it, because I know they're going to want everything they can get, but we also have to be, we have to sooner or later, sometimes be reasonable about all this stuff. We all need to have everything we want, but we've also not, I mean, out, out there at Middleton's, when they were there, they were doing expansion, and we didn't make them do it around there because they couldn't, they couldn't get around their building that way. So I guess what I was wanting to make sure is that we weren't just asking for the moon on that 360 around there, when you've got a lot of parking lots still sitting there.
And the building is, you know, approximately 60 by 60 overall, so, I mean, being able to, from any angle, pretty much, they'd be able, from the parking lot, be able to access any point with their trucks and their hoses there, wouldn't be a, you know, if they came in the front, they'd be able to dress it there in the back, and you know, they can be able to spray the distance in between there too. We're not too concerned with that issue.
Would you like to accept the landscaping as presented? And not require the east side to be landscaped?
I'd be okay with that.
I would.
I'm comfortable with that.
So would we want to put that in our motion, Dean?
Yeah, I, I think that with the, with this going from a current parking lot to something that's kind of paved and the adjacent site being parking lot, that it'd be appropriate to not require that landscaping. And when you make a motion, just basically to approve the landscaping plan as presented.
Okay. And would we do that after we voted on our other motion? Or did we make a motion?
No, we haven't made a motion, I would just include that within the motion.
Okay.
It seems like we've still got an issue with the trees as they proposed them, because they're screening their own business out.
Right.
My question is, I mean, is, are you going to be able to maintain all these trees and all this shrubbery that were, even what you have in here, which is short of our ordinance, it's because of the parking lots that you have, is what's making that calculation? Because what we don't want to do is, we don't want to put all these, in my opinion, put all these trees in there, not look good, not be maintained, just because we said you had to, and, you know, it'll look good after a while.
Wouldn't you do so much parking again, because we wanted it?
Lack of a better term.
So if you could reduce it, would you?
Um, I guess that's a question for you as an owner, if you'd be fine reducing it.
I don't have a problem reducing it, but I also don't want to be on the city's bad side if it's a traffic issue. And I anticipate with that location, that's going to be your highest traffic store in the city.
Are you putting this grass in on the western norther side, is that going to be new sod or grass?
Yeah, it would be grass, sod.
Some of it exists, I'm not sure there'd be expansion of that or not.
It's, it's kind of a grass-weed mix right now, we'd kind of clean that up and basically, yeah. And so, we would clean that up and, and just make that grass off.
But the driveway is from the south, that's how you're going to get to your building, come in from the south and go all the way up to the building, correct?
Correct.
But the north side, it looks to me like they're going to have to chew up pavement to place grass in there, because right now it's a really thin strip.
That is correct.
I'm wondering why you didn't propose maybe some more grass in the southern part, and also.
Well, the biggest issue we have with the southern part, our, our biggest concern was if we put a bunch of trees on it, that's the main entrance in and out right there, and it becomes a visibility issue then. You know, if we plant all these trees there, and we have high traffic in and out, and this is, that south part, that's the access to the rest, to the big lots and the rest of the strip, so if there's a lot of traffic right there, and people are trying to turn in and out, and there's a bunch of visibility blocking right there, we were worried about public safety in that situation.
You're going to have customers from the other two marijuana stores parking in your southern lot, you know that probably, right?
Charge them rent.
With, with our ordinance, did you put more trees in trying to get to that tree and shrub number? Would you do this if, if we didn't have that ordinance? What would you propose to put in there?
I mean, what we had prior was about half.
Nothing.
No, I mean, we definitely want trees, trees beautify the landscape, and of course, we want that, we want this to look a nice, this is going to be a beautiful building and a beautiful location, and we really want to make, we want to be a part of the community and want to have that. But what we had originally proposed was about half of this on there, and again, we worked for the landscape company to try to see what can we do to absolutely maximize this, and they said this is probably about the absolute max you can get on here, to be able to keep things alive. Obviously, we can plant twice as much as this, but it's not likely that the plants will survive long-term.
How much would they have recommended?
Sounds like about half.
Well, I mean, they, they said this is the max, I, I, you know, they didn't say, hey, if you, our, our overall recommendation would be to reduce this lower. We were trying to meet the ordinance and the best that we could on this.
Because my comment is, is I think we ought to let them have less than what they even proposed here, because I think it's ridiculous to have them put all those trees in there, they're not going to make it, they're going to be overgrown, and the shrubs are not going to make it either. So why, I mean, I want shrub, or I would bring stuff out there, but I just don't think we'd need this much.
Well, and how many times have we talked about the view down Willowbrook Road, now we're planting more trees along the road? I mean, it just seems like what we asked for is counter to what we really want, I don't know. I'm, I'm at a point where I have to excuse myself, so I'm going to miss the rest of this discussion, and I apologize for that, but I think you guys know where I'm at.
It is available on YouTube, so you can put that in the background.
Yeah, I might do that.
See you, Jeff.
And what if they did the southern part of that lot, did more just grass, I mean, more green, just grass, eliminate some of the trees in front of their building on Willowbrook, so you could see the front of the building, it is a cool-looking building. I mean, I just don't understand all that parking.
I agree with Mary. And I think when you're driving by, you know, it's safety, of course, you know, it's going to be so hard to maintain it with so many trees, like, you know, different colored bushes and some flowers in between, or something like that, roses, and something nice and maintainable, but a tree is going to maintain a lot, a lot of care.
It is a farm theme, so it does go with the farm theme.
Be able to maintain it.
Put a chicken lot over in the corner over there.
Only six chickens, though.
They're not by my house.
Why'd you put the building all the way to the north, or this farther south, just out of curiosity, it seems like you're, you're making people drive for the, so they can see, oh, why wouldn't you put it in the middle of that side, just out of curiosity, is there a reason?
Um, visibility from the highway was one thought, because the further back it was, the easier it was visible from the highway. And then, overall, I was trying to get people in the site and not, you know, coming right in, parking right there, we were trying to get people to get a little bit off of the, traffic-wise, if there are a few people pulling in, we don't want them backed up right there and and blocking traffic on the south access drive as well. On the north side, obviously, we don't anticipate a lot of people driving past it. I mean, the first few people may miss it and drive past it and come in through the north side, but by the time they go past all the parking there and turn right in the parking lot to get over there, there, there's not a lot of traffic over there either, so.
And you're at the widest part of the lot, too.
Correct, yeah.
So you get parking on the front and across.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Would eliminating those three trees and the shrub right in front of your, directly west of your building, would that be beneficial to you? would that be beneficial to you? Just having it be grass? The owner's nod his head so hard, he's going to break his neck.
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the reasons for the height of the silo is just to get the visibility. But, uh, yeah, if we could have more exposure in the front, we'd definitely like it.
And we could replace that with some shrubs, too. You know, if we needed to, some lower-lying greenscape, if we got rid of those three trees.
There's hell bent to do all the parking, the islands are kind of nice. I mean, just for a little breaking up, but I'd have no problem getting rid of the trees in front of their building. Something more reasonable. Or if they want to come back, I mean, if you want to get this going, but I mean, would we be amenable? You want to get this done?
Yes, we would like to.
And I will say, at one point, we looked at the shopping center behind there. We've been working on this deal for, I think it took me nine months to get this property closed. And when we were looking back there, one of the issues in that old goodwill and whatnot is the trees at the bank. You can't see the storefront. And so, i- is it going to impede the view on everyone at the strip mall? Probably.
Help your I-69 visibility do a little bit, create direction. Would you be comfortable approving this plan and giving Dean the authority to approve a lesser landscape plan? You've heard the discussion, so you kind of know.
I've heard the discussion. Yeah, I'll approve whatever they bring forward.
Way to give up. We finally beat them.
So we're just talking about removing the three trees, and they could just do low-lying vegetation and bushes, you know, like a hedge row or something there.
Did you have specific trees planned for this? Had you picked out any?
We've looked at a handful of them, but we do not have specifics at this time.
I guess my, from a vegetation standpoint, I mean, they're going to be getting visibility from two locations, on the street right in front of them and from the highway on-ramp, which is quite a bit higher. So, it's not as if there aren't ornamental trees that wouldn't be, they don't have to plant an 80-foot walnut tree that would block it from the highway. If they have a plan from a landscape architect that will be better, will better serve the vegetation on this site, then I am, I'm not a fire marshal, I'm not a landscape architect, I will listen to those professionals and take their word for it. So, you know, all I've done is lay out what our ordinance says, what it requires. That's not me fighting for trees or vegetation. That's me saying, this is what our ordinance requires. And to be fair, this is what any other marijuana establishment that looks to build a site will read in the ordinance and plan out accordingly. And that's why I lay it out like that. Then I identify what they have. And again, if they've got a landscape architect they've been working with that has different recommendations, then I think that that's probably going to be more nimble than what our ordinance lays out. And those trees will have, all that vegetation will have a better chance of survival. And it'll eliminate the amount of tickets that we'll be sending them afterwards about talking their weeks. But we do that, we send violators' tickets about not maintaining their vegetation. But that process is a slow process with lots of trying to make sure all the Ts are crossed. That's my tangent, that's very far away from the question that was asked.
Let me just add, I think, a couple of points. So, unfortunately, I don't think you could just give Dean the authority to waive the requirement of the provisions of the zoning code. I mean, that would take a variance or a change to the ordinance. So, inasmuch as we're going to be talking about this and why we have Jill here tonight, which is a good discussion for her to observe, you know, to get it back on the table after a couple of years of discussion. But I think what you could do is, you could approve the site plan subject to revising the landscaping. I know the landscaping might have some other physical changes that would, that would then ultimately be made to the site. But to let them get a construction permit, for example, and still work on the landscaping subsequent to this. But aside from applying for a variance, I don't want you to just wave a magic wand and give Dean the authority to, to make revision or make deferrals to the zoning code when it's not really legally supported.
So what you're saying is, we'd approve this with them bringing back the landscaping to us after another meeting?
Yeah. And maybe by that time, maybe we've.
That way they can move forward, knowing what.
That's what I was trying to get to. You only confused me on one question. We've got to comply with our landscape ordinance, but I think we said this doesn't comply. This is already a reduction in what we would require, is that?
Correct.
So, that's where you've confused me. We're ready to approve this, that doesn't meet our ordinance. But now you're saying we can't do a little bit less than is already less.
I think he's saying you don't want to give.
No, you're not giving Dean.
You don't want to empower. I will back Keith up on that. Trust me on.
We'd amend the ordinance or we, or reduce the requirement for landscaping, whether it's through the lesser parking or trying to get his, trying to get their numbers down.
Okay, let's get going.
I'm going to agree.
Make a motion that we accept the site plan, but they bring back the landscaping to us at the next meeting with a plan of what the landscaping is, that way they can get going.
With the stipulations that he put down for stormwater and everything, right?
Yeah, and that, that stormwater, I don't. So the stormwater is something that we'll handle administratively. The biggest changes will be if they're not able to get in a, an agreement to use the Gander RV pond, then whether that changes the site. Are you going to do an underground kind of leach basin, or is it going to have a detention basin?
It'd be a leaching underground.
And you scroll back to the conditions you had, that Dean had.
Again, I didn't really have conditions so much as they were just general staff comments. But that was, the landscape plans do not include the plantings that we've talked about at length. The sidewalks do not include ADA compliant ramps. Stormwater management plan must be developed. The site must be served by the fire marshal's recommendations. And so the erosion sediment control permit will be required.
But again, if you did more grass, would that eliminate your leach basin and stuff? Could you do more for your area, eliminate some of your parking, put in more grass and save money?
If, if we're not able to tie into the existing system, we will need it regardless. And I mean, unless the whole site was grass, but.
My question to Dave, do they have to come back to us, or they just, when we're approving the site?
Has to come back to us because from Keith's comment, I think it's got to come back to us. That way it gets it going. And landscaping is going to be down the road for him anyway, so they have plenty of time to come back. Can you scroll, can you scroll to those?
Yes.
Whatever, the fire marshal also, I think we shouldn't be roasting. I mean, if they've got three-fourths of it covered, I don't think we ought to be making them make alterations.
I mean, none of us are fire marshals, and none of us know the fire code.
I just think it's unreasonable, that's my problem. So, I think that they're always going to ask for the moon. I know how those guys work, sorry. I'll make the motion to approve the site plan with them bringing back the landscape.
For additional approval.
For additional approval. And we'll also be reasonable with this 20-foot fire lane around the building.
And the stormwater management?
Well, everything except for the landscape they got to bring back. And we need to be reasonable with that 20-foot fire lanes because not all buildings all have that. And everything else is a condition that he has on there. That's my motion.
I'll be honest, one reason I decided that I didn't want to do the stuff on the east is because it takes that corner that you're talking about, trying to get around. It eliminates that because you don't have the hard break in the property line there. You know what I'm talking about, Dave?
No.
So on the east side, if we said they had to do trees all the way down the east side of that, now to get on the north side of that building, to go up that 20-foot section there in a turn, they couldn't do it. But because we didn't require, we're not going to require, it sounds like, the vegetation, they can actually go directly in the north and make that corner easy, I think.
Okay, that's good. I just want, I just want to make sure that we're being reasonable with that for it being hardcore and not.
Right, exactly. That was my mind thought is, you know, that's why I wanted the east side.
Hey, we have a motion on the table.
Wait, wait, can they go ahead and get their permit then, based on how blue to think he just came up with?
Yep.
I did support it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Fuck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Jill.
You have seven minutes.
I was waiting for the, like, the power to go out or something. Seems like every time I come out.
Don't say that out loud.
I have, to help with our conversation, I have a little interactive exercise. But it would only work if everybody has a phone or a tablet they can use to access it. So that's first question, number one. And number two, are you willing to do that?
I'm in.
All right. And then the third question, can I connect to your. Maybe I should have got the first question.
What do we have to connect?
I think I have.
You just have to make sure we're connected, the wifi?
So while I'm connecting, if you go to this website, menti.com, mentee.
M?
M E N T I dot com.
Okay.
You want a presentation?
A secret code that you get on.
Dean, do you want to do your, you want to do your thing first?
Well, I, I just prepared that, that PowerPoint with just some comparisons. And I don't want to go through that. It was just a, this is what these developments look like in our community, this is what they look like in other communities. As well as, I've kind of been thinking on the matter of if we, if we have some kind of a waiver system, how that, how that works. In my mind, I still think it would benefit us to improve our intent and purpose statement. That way we know why we're doing any of this anyway. And it helps issue waivers a little bit more effectively. If you know, okay, well, this is our intention, and this site plan, as is proposed to us, will better serve those intentions, so this is why we're going to issue the waiver.
I do know.
So, as I look at like possible exceptions to the landscape ordinance, I think of the existing vegetation on-site. If you have a site that's got vegetation, but it's not in the location specified by the ordinance, then the preservation of that might do a better service to, you know, the community as a whole than to have them clear-cut that and put, you know, some saplings over by the street. If they've got a landscape architect involved, if they've hired a professional that knows about plants, plant care, what plants thrive and how they thrive, then there's a likelihood that that plan's going to be more effective than one tree per every 30 feet and six shrubs per every 30 feet. And as well as the ability to defer landscaping if there's no development adjacent to us. And this gets to the halit, you know, kind of overflow lot. There was no development next to that, so I don't think the landscaping really provides the kind of, much of a service there. The waivers then could be administrative planning commissioners, ZBA. I think the planning commission's probably the appropriate place for those because to Keith's point, you don't want to coronate me with the ability to make decisions. That's pretty certain. And I don't think the ZBA, like, formal appeals process is on the way to go.
I don't think Dean wants it either.
I've got a lot of very strong opinions, and I should not be making decisions based on those. So, anything that you guys can do to reel that in is for everyone's benefit. And then, some of the triggers that right now trigger landscaping, as far as I, my administration of the ordinance goes, are whether there's a site plan review. And site plan review is triggered if there's 10% change in footprint of parking or building. And as soon as anyone hits that, then I'm saying site plan review, this is where we're going to look for compliance with the landscape ordinance, with the stormwater ordinance at the very least. And those are usually enough to temper people that are on the margins of whether they need that 10% expansion, or if they can get by with the 9% expansion, or, you know, they're doing a serious redevelopment of the site. We could increase this, particularly when it comes to the landscape ordinance. We could say that landscape compliance doesn't trigger unless you're doing a 20% expansion of your footprint of parking or the building. And maybe we could also input kind of an investment amount to that. So, if you're doing such a rate of investment into this site, then you're going to trigger compliance in a way that just, you know, adding a few extra parking spaces doesn't. So those are the thoughts that I'd had, particularly pertaining to waivers rather than a wholesale revision of the landscape ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions. It looks like we've got the mentee queued up as well, so.
Oh, okay, I need to use the code.
I'm not going to participate in this because I don't want to skew the results either, so.
We'll be doing something?
Yeah, so if you have that mentee pulled up on your, on your phones, when you get to that page, it'll ask you for the code, and it's at the top there, 6004-4703.
Well, I don't see where it asks me for a code.
So you're asking for our short answer.
Yes, so this one, you could just type whatever you want.
This is going to be tricky, I know.
But the cool thing is.
She's trying to catch you.
Well, some of you, you're quite clear on what you feel. What I do think is interesting is that even when you're presented with, like, the last conversation, like, you still want the landscaping. And that's the, there's that, that fine line that you, it's hard to get our hands around what it is that we're trying to ensure we have and not give away. And so we're afraid to not necessarily approve something without that landscaping. But there must be a point at which we say that we're going to do, as to Dean's point, some flexibility in the application of the ordinance. So, going back to, to how Dean framed this conversation, this is about kind of going back to why we're doing this. So we talked about this about a year ago, well, it was more than a year ago. It was probably almost two years ago, actually. But kind of going back to that and using this tool to let everybody have a chance to participate. And kind of maybe you're just going to say some things, or you could say things here that you may not want to necessarily say out loud. But.
Maybe you got to answer like a two or three words.
This will be the only one that you will do open-ended. The other ones I'll ask you are going to be a little bit more targeted. And I've used Dean's intents in here, too, and we can kind of rank those a little bit. So that'll be coming up. And there's just about, I think I did six. I added a couple more while I was sitting, listening to your conversation.
You laugh, man. How do you know which one's mine?
I know exactly.
I thought it was pretty short.
And after this, after our meeting, I'll send all the results back to Dean, and you guys can have those for your posterity. And you can answer as many as you want. It doesn't have to be just one thing. You can think of something else, you can feel free to pop that into.
I've had enough time, a little hostile typing, but she's done. Play Candy Crush over here.
No, I won't. I don't even play that game.
We don't let Dan do this.
We should, yeah.
What do you mean, no? I would, Dean, I could skew the.
I think we're done, aren't we?
All right, everybody had a chance to get their thoughts in there?
Give them too much time.
Okay, no, that's good. It's anything up there that anybody has a question about? Or is that pretty much what you expected to see? It looks like pretty much everybody's on board with making sure that there's a nice appearance in the city. That's probably the most frequently cited. That's probably the most frequently cited statement here, including, including I think even property values. If I were to say, do we want landscaping to enhance property values? And also seeing that that might be tied to a fair playing field, and that we're making the same requirements of everybody in the interest of everybody's property values staying improved. It seems reasonable, all right. I'm going to go to the next one. So these are, if you had a chance to look at Dean's memo that he sent out, he had a couple of draft intent statements. So I've got a couple on this page and a couple on the next page. And so this one is asking you to the level of which you agree or disagree. You can slide, I think with your finger, you can slide the response there. And I agree with Dean that these are the most important, this is the most important part of the landscape ordinance. It's really the most important part of any set of rules, is so that the applicants are aware of why we're doing things, and the approving body is aware of why we're doing them. And then if we're going to allow some flexibility, kind of understanding where we would offer that flexibility, like what's the framework? Why would we allow that if we're getting, going to get something else that might advance some of these other goals that we have? That might be something that's worthwhile.
So this is what we think the intent should be?
Yes.
This is agreeing or just how strongly you agree with.
Right, do you agree with these statements?
Those statements.
And how much do you agree with them? And we'll ask these in another, like a little bit of a different way in a minute. They all eight, I think. Then we have a couple more. All right. Good, so some of these responses, I think, might give us a little indication of where we might be offering, considering some flexibility as we go through the changes. Okay, and then these are kind of a couple of easy ones. Why are we updating these landscape standards? There's four on this slide, and there's four more on the next slide. So we do these, and then I have a few more. And going to a little bit more specific, maybe on this one.
I think that right there, Jill, is probably the most important.
It looks like it. That's good, that's good to know.
Dance around all that stuff, where we can focus on.
Right. Right, and then this, I thought this one was interesting because then we think about where we want the landscaping. So if we, if we are considering being flexible, what is it that we think are the more important areas to see landscaped? So is that along the roads? Is it in the parking lots that are on the building foundations? I should have probably put in like screening between properties or dissimilar properties, but we can always talk about that. I have just a couple more. So this is, when should existing sites be required to be compliant? And this goes to Dean's point that he was just making about what triggers landscape improvements. So the first one with the changes to a parking lot layout, that might be, somebody's going to come in and they're going to re-strive their parking lot.
Why is it always tied to parking lots?
Because parking lots are the most paved, obviously, area of a site, and for a number of reasons to, as one I know that some of you didn't agree with, that one of the first ones about mitigating the heat island effect, that's a really important reason to plant trees and landscaping in parking lots. Parking lots contribute to heating of a site just by their nature of being paved. But they can also help with stormwater runoff, and so they're a really good place to have landscaping, to maybe serve as a natural way to collect or detain some of the stormwater that would otherwise run off of a site and cause flooding potentially in other properties. So those would be, plus they just really kind of look ugly. I mean, it was interesting, we, this is not really, we can't do this necessarily here, but we were in Florida earlier in the, in the spring, and my husband, who's not like super attuned to like, well, actually, he's, he's, after 25 years, he's starting to learn, because I keep saying things about city planning, or, you know, landscaping, or things where we go. And we pulled into, like every shopping center we pulled into when we were in Florida has, they have these beautiful landscape beds, trees in the parking lots. And one time we pulled in, he's like, gosh, I cannot get over all the landscaping here. Why don't we do this at home? Because nobody wants to have this much vegetation, and, and to some extent, our climate. But I think that's, it's really noticeable when you go other places, how much more landscaping they may require. All right. And then this is, so the first one was relating to more parking lot changes, and then this one is regarding more about structures. And I think this is a really interesting idea of gauging how much, how much redevelopment of a project. Because we tend to think when we write ordinances, it's, it's either, that it's brand new, a brand new development. And so we often struggle when we are trying to bring sites into compliance, and we're not really clear in our ordinance with what we are requiring and when we're requiring it. So I think this is a good thing to be thinking about as we talk about updating these standards. All right. And I think, okay, and then to what extent should a site be brought into compliance? So any, just adding the required landscaping only where the improvements are proposed? So for example, if it was parking lot, we would require the parking lot landscaping. If it was a building addition off of one side, and maybe that side faced a road or another district where we would otherwise require some landscaping, then we would require it on that side.
Similar to the last.
Yeah.
They were proposing improvements on one part of it, but not along that east or south boundary.
What extent should a site be brought into compliance? In the event of a new site plan.
Yeah, if we, if we set a certain threshold in the ordinance, and we said, if you're improving your building 25%, you've got to comply with the site standards, but then maybe part B is, and to this extent. Kind of like a, maybe choose your own adventure.
So if it's a 50% expansion of the parking lot, then do we only require landscaping for that 50% expansion? Or do you then require the whole thing to be standard?
I think that is the end of those. So, back, if I can get back. Can I just go back and look at some of those answers? So I think, you know, looking at those intent statements, certainly, the aesthetics, protecting other land uses, to some extent, the environmental conditions, maybe not as much in the area of worrying about property values on subject parcel and adjacent parcels, but still, three and a half. Native vegetation, that might be an area that we need to explore further, or offer that as one of the areas in which we're applying some flexibility. And then again, the heat island effect. Clearly looking to have better landscaping and seeing landscaping live longer. And those are things that we did talk about before. Just kind of bringing everybody back to remembering what those conversations were, and then clearly making the landscape standards more flexible. Looks like for sure, if we're adding 50% or more of the parking spaces, and then sort of we're in a middle area with respect to parking lot expansions of other types. But I think maybe if we combine this one with this one, to what extent should it be brought into compliance? Then maybe that would be an area that would warrant some additional conversation. So if we said 25% of your parking, now we're going to make a 25% increase in the landscaping for this site. Does that sound like a reasonable direction that we want to get started with?
I just want to point out that a three score, to me, meant no opinion, basically.
Okay. That was sort of neutral, is how you felt about it?
You didn't strongly agree or disagree.
Right, yeah, that's fair.
But that was the average of the votes cast.
Right. You need to see like the variance to really understand.
Yeah.
And I can send that, because it'll give me the Excel sheets, and we can look at those for a little more analysis. But we don't need to go overboard on, on the analysis either. I think it seems like we have some good agreement with the intents, and then maybe a reorganization is what we wanted to look at next. Really focused on the flexibility and where we might provide some, not necessarily relief, but the ability for the planning commission, and I think that really is a responsibility of the planning commission, or planning commission enabling staff to make some determinations on landscaping. I don't think, I agree with Dean, I don't think it belongs with the zoning board of appeals. I don't, that's really not. They're not really.
One of what we've got going here is, A, my comment is we're doing it by parking lot, by parking spaces, right? And you said in the previous presentation that we asked for a lot more parking spaces. I'm not saying to change that. But the biggest thing is, I think, your presentation showed all these places, we had better landscaping than a lot of other towns. So what I think it is, is I think we're, per parking space, we're requiring too much. We need to tone that down. So we bring it down a level. And then the other thing is, is being able to have someone, be able to bring to the planning commission and say, hey, we don't want to do what, but here's what we want to do with a professional landscaper. I think that's really where we're headed. We just want some flexibility, just like what we did with the gentleman today. Right now, Dean brings this, this thing, and I understand why Dean's doing it. Dean says, the ordinance says this, and you need to tell us that, because that's your job. You may not necessarily believe that's what you ought to be, but we just, we just need to tone it down. You know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We need to tone it down and give the person the chance to come to the planning commission and ask for less, if we believe. I think that's what we really need to look at. I just think, and also define what a shrub, you know, we say shrubs. What is shrub? Put those various, various things in there, because when you say a shrub to me, I think of a green thing that's got to be trimmed and maintained all the time. I just got rid of my last two things I got trimmed in my house. It's all day lilies, hostas, everything, there's nothing I have to trim. And I think that's what we need to.
Perennials.
That's what we need to look at. I think we're all agreeing with that. I think that's where you need to move, move forward on.
I think that's, that's what I was going with. It doesn't have to be a certain amount of certain trees.
Can you pull the microphone closer to you?
Yeah. I'm only five foot, so my bosom can't get so far. But I think like, you know, having a certain amount of certain trees or a certain amount of certain bushes, I think just leave it to the professionals, landscapers, and have them come, you know, with their idea and present it, and we can all vote on it, whether, if it's too much or if it's too less. But I don't know, I think that last presentation with all those trees is overwhelming. It's a lot, and to keep it maintained for, you know, how many years? I don't know, are they going to keep it up, you know, maintained or not?
I am, thank you.
I don't know.
David, you got to get out of there, David, as a professional landscaper, because there are places like Halits or Dutchers that we could do an exemption for because of location. So I wouldn't want to tie it into professional circumstances, location.
Right, but I think that goes back to flexibility, is that if, when David came to us and he just got rid of all those trees, our ordinance said he had to put them back. So that's, and that made no sense out there. Same way with consumer power, they're way out by the, you know, by Walmart distribution. We don't, you know, to me, they shouldn't have had to pull out stuff. And if they want to, fine, have at it. But I just think that we've got to sit down and say, okay, we need to reduce the amount if we're going to keep the parking spaces. We've got to reduce, define the amount of trees, have flexibility, and be able to eliminate altogether.
Some circumstances.
Right.
Yeah.
How do we do that in reality? How do we just not this complicated?
Not this complicated, there's knowing what the landscaping ordinance is even there to, to do. And that's part of, some of those questions are, do you agree with this statement or not? And if we don't agree with some of those reasons to landscape, then we won't include that in an intent statement. But, you know, you have to have, I think, some kind of an intent or purpose statement that you can look at and say, this is why this ordinance exists. So if I'm looking to make a waiver from it, I'm waving from it for reasons that either strengthen or.
Location, alternative plans that make more sense. I mean, something simple that's.
And to.
We agree with that intent. Why are we arguing? The intent is wonderful, it's beautiful. 90% of the people will go ahead and follow and do what we say. We're trying to deal with those 5%, 10% that want some flexibility because of halit, because of consumers' energy, right?
Yep. Well, again, you know, just looking at that, you know, thing we looked at today, that made no sense to require that kind of landscaping in there. They ought to be able to bring to us a presentation and not feel like they have to. They were, they were trying to fit into our ordinance.
But they were trying.
But our intent, I think what we're doing in the city is fine. I don't think we even have to change that at all. It's shown by your pictures of the certain, or your pictures, whoever it was, of places. But fine, that's Culvers, that's O'Reilly's. I let them do that out there. I mean, that's, if they want to put those trees all together and three or four of them, you know, but what we need to do is, we've got an ordinance, it's working, but it's excessive. That's the issue.
In some circumstances, it's excessive. That's what we want to fix.
But most of the places are. I mean, look at, if we follow the cities, look at Tibbetts Plaza. There's way too much in there. If you look at the banks, the bank is nice, colorful, clean. That's not. That looks like a jungle, and my, just my opinion. That's way too much, so we're asking for too much. We, you know, instead of asking for 10 shrubs for a parking spot, why don't we go down to five or half of it or something like that? That's what I'm looking for. And I think people, the cost of it, I mean, the cost of landscaping is, is up there.
It's not that we have 10 or less parking spaces, but when you get 50.
Right.
It does get to be a lot.
Right.
And then the property has to be so large that fits the spots, and then they have all that vegetation around them.
And the one we just looked at, what he's trying to do is he's trying to help that area, because he already knows that he's there. Two other places are going to be there, there's going to be parking problems, and he, he's trying to get parking, but what's happening is because we have our landscaping tied to it, it balloons the number. And there should be relief there, you know, to me. And make it nice, but don't make it overbearing.
So if, so to kind of recap that last, some of the reasons, I, because I think that to say that it's just too expensive to require landscaping, I don't think is part of what we said originally at the very first question, is providing a level playing field.
As a business owner?
Property value.
It is, it's got to do with cost, too.
Well, but I know, but when you're saying you want to have a, a level playing field, and yet we're going to allow some people to not skimp, we'll say skimp, and some people to, we're going to hold them to it. If you're corporate, we're. If you're corporate, we're going to make you do the top of the line, but if you're local, we're going to let you slide a little bit, because the corporate guys are going to say, yeah, but you don't do that here, so we don't need to bring our A game, we're only going to bring our C game.
They got, they got to have it approved by us, though. We're not saying, we're not saying that they automatically get out of it.
Right, so I'm helping, trying to discern what those triggers are, so I heard that there's a concern about when we were trying to provide all the required parking for a site and do the landscaping, that now, that's, that was a problem, that was the problem with the last case that you just heard. Is, are there any other conditions that you found where someone has said, I just can't put in all the landscaping because, is it a topography issue, is it a?
Sometimes it's cost, I mean, duchers was cost.
Yeah, and logistics made no sense in that location.
And what was it about that location?
Well, they were, they were adding to their parking lot, and therefore it triggered the need for them to landscape previously unlandscaped area.
Okay, so if it's not really visible from the general public?
Well, the other thing is, we wanted planters, they're at their funeral, we wanted planters inside the parking lot. Well, that doesn't set up very well for their type of business, so, but again, there's no sense of spending other people's money.
Yeah, I agree with that, when you can't see it from the general public, that that might be an area that you don't need this.
US 12, they had a little small spot, where what we would have been asking for was, it would have been a, you know, it'd been a forest, a jungle in there.
Another one was the BPU building, all they did was, we did the parking lot where it has zero landscaping, then we had to add a bunch of landscaping, so that was another example.
Right, and that does when someone's expecting just a certain redevelopment cost, and now it's more.
It was just a change of use, but that triggered an entire redo.
Right, and that's what we were trying to get at with some of those questions about when are we going to trigger that kind of compliance.
But it's very attractive.
I think it.
That's a load of questions.
There's two issues here, there's an issue where we require too much A, just to begin with, and that are, the other issue where we won't do, interested in granting waivers based on circumstances, alternative plans, location, and we're making a mistake trying to put them all in one pot. Do we have consensus that we'd like to have waivers based on alternative plans presented, based on location, based on circumstances, is that, do we have somewhat of agreement on that, before we address, I mean, does anybody not agree with that, that we want to, we just did it tonight, for God's sake. What's wrong with having our ordinance saying, this is our requirements, which we can deal with if they're two owners later, if you don't agree with this, you're welcome to submit an alternative plan or request a waiver to the planning commission, period.
Can the planning commission not approve anything they see fit at the time, or do we have to have written reasons we can, we can adjust it?
Jill, I do think it's easier for you all to have a conversation if you have some boundaries. If you've got some, going back to the intent statement, it might be as simple as that, presented with, you know, the planning commission may waive certain requirements of this section based on the following, and that, you know, a design professional has prepared the plans, that native plantings are going to be installed, maybe that's not a big one, but maybe required parking can't be met.
You need to be making sure the site, locations.
Right, that's the area to be landscaped, isn't visible, and, or other factors that you may agree, but just giving you some, some lane, you know, some bound, some guardrails.
Or some minimums, so that you at least have minimums, which I think was Dave saying, let's kind of reduce this, we might require even more, but this is the minimum.
I think it just, it helps your conversation, and it also helps the applicant be prepared to say, oh, oh, I don't have to do all this, I can instead hire somebody professional, and they're going to help me design a plan that maybe meets the spirit of the ordinance in a way that, that just applying it by exact letter isn't doing, so it lets the applicant know what you're going to be expecting. Because then they can just come to you and say, we want a waiver, and you'll say, well, why, and then you'll have a long drawn out conversation, and you'll make them go home and fix their plans and come back.
You have to be prepared for the halits and the duchers, that maybe there's no reason to do anything. That's a problem with minimums, and there are going to be circumstances where they're, they may not need anything. They're just expanding their parking lot for a funeral home, and they got trees all around it, what the hell do we care if they have planters?
So that might be another one, is that there's sufficient?
You have to have justification why you're doing it.
Yeah, I think we get, I think we get out of that one, because it would still meet the spirit of what we're trying to do, to let them get away with it.
The community, the surrounding area or something, I, I think we're making this way too complicated, but, and then we could address our things, two owners to begin with, but that's another, I think there are two issues here.
Yeah, I actually don't think so, I think that, I'm hearing some good standards by which you're sort of starting to measure these things anyway, and I think that Dean and I can work on an ordinance and bring it back to you. I mean, we could, we can continue to have conversations about it, but I think, I think that we had thought there would be some changes to this section, we recommended just a reorganization of it, just to make it a little bit easier for people to find the standards and what's required, but I don't think it needs to be a very long and drawn out and complicated ordinance, because that's not, that's not really what you want, and I don't think that gets to your point about providing that flexibility either.
If we want flexibility, what issue?
Yep.
And we need reduction of what we're asking for is the other.
And when you say a reduction?
We've got to determine if the majority want both.
Right, well, the amount of plantings, specifically the amount of trees.
We got to make sure, those are two separate issues.
But I mean, like today, that was just ridiculous.
Which part of it, though, was ridiculous?
They didn't come close, they had a hard time with what they were putting in there, weren't even coming close to what our ordinance was asking for, it's ridiculous.
Was that, was just, was it with the number of trees, was, I know you talked about shrubs versus perennials, but?
It was mostly a number of trees.
Trees and shrubs, 42 shrubs versus 120 shrubs?
They needed more parking than they needed.
Right.
Yeah, right.
But they, but they wanted the parking because, so what they're doing is they're penalizing themselves, there's no reason to put 120 shrubs in there.
But is, I mean, was that a consideration or a concern for anyone, that they were putting in too much parking?
No.
You were happy to see the extra parking spaces?
Yeah, the parking spaces, I don't think bothers any of us, it's just that we don't like the landscaping associated with that extra spaces.
Because we have our landscaping tied to the parking spaces, that was their decision, but by doing that, and they wanted that parking for their people, which is great, but then they had all this, but then the landscaping got dragged along with it. 27 trees out there is just absolutely ridiculous, I mean, that's just, and the cost of it, on top of it, you know, if that was a, I don't care who it is, it's just ridiculous to put that many trees in there, you know they're not all going to survive, and they're going to end up butting against each other, and, that's, that's the whole thing, we're just asking for way too much.
We're asking for quality versus quantity.
Right, and I think that survey showed that we're looking for quality and clean, you know, a clean landscaping thing, not this overbearing, that we're doing.
But if you had larger trees that you required instead of the number of them, so instead of, I forget what you have, is it two and a half, or three inch caliper trees?
I don't think we have that.
Did you say?
Trees, and it's one tree for every 30 linear feet of.
Right, so what if we said, if you put in a four inch or a five inch tree, you can use one for 60 feet, or whatever that might be an equivalent to?
I think some of it, too, is the type of tree, not necessarily the size of the tree that we put in. From what I've heard of landscaping, and I'm not a landscape architect or landscaper, but in a lot of cases, a three inch tree will grow faster and better than a six inch tree at the same height, because there's not as much disruption to the root ball and that, so I really think it, in the long term, needs to be tied to the type of tree, more than just the size of tree as it's being installed. But there should still be some kind of a minimum, because otherwise, they're just going to slap a sackling in because they're eight bucks for 20 of them at the depot.
Do you have to bring back representation into waiver language to allow us to have discretion to produce, it's going?
With Jill.
I don't care who he does it with.
Yeah.
We'd like to be able to look at something, whether it's from professional or because of location, and say, okay.
Okay. I will say, a lot of those pictures show that we're better off community because of having some landscaping.
If you compare our downtown Dollar General to Angola's downtown Dollar General, there's a picture in that slideshow, I prefer our downtown Dollar General. And the, the final, and the final slide in this was one that I thought was kind of interesting. I just pulled all these from Google because I wanted the same perspective on all of these, it's not tritography on my part or anything, but this is the KFC, which is noncompliant, it's an old site, the O'Reilly's, which is compliant because it's a new site, and then the Los Tequilos beyond that, which is noncompliant, it's an old site, and this is the intent of zoning our ordinance, is we're slowly trying to fill in and make that stretch a little bit, you know, more pleasant.
Well, to be fair, you couldn't hardly see O'Reilly. The trees block it out.
My, I was 10 the first time I came to Coldwater, and we came in Marshall Street, and at that time, it had the old trees, it had the narrower road, and there were tall trees, and it made an impression on me as a 10-year-old. I remember that, and I think the more trees you have, it brings more pleasant memories to people, it creates a more positive attitude or area, and I, I'm for the trees. First of all, for my health, because I'm asthmatic, and it helps produce clean air for me, but secondly, because of the beauty, it is pretty to look at, and that memory of coming into Coldwater has stuck with me, and I'm 72, so it's stuck with me for a long time. And I'm sad that all those trees are gone on Marshall.
I think the, I really read the first question in an important way, which was, what's the intent? And the intent has to be to maintain property values and infrastructure as far as stormwater retention and stuff, but if we go beyond that, it's a tax, and we're now, the city is now making judgments for these businesses on what kind of landscape they should have, beyond the level of what maintains property values and the standard of living, and if we go beyond that, then we're making decisions that are, should be left up to the business owners and the homeowners, et cetera, because if they want to go beyond that, that's up to them, but if we're making them go beyond a level that maintains the rest of the town's look, then we're asking too much, in my opinion. We're taxing those businesses, so they don't want to come in, or they don't, you know, we might be causing businesses not to be erected if they, you know, the Dutcher one's a good example, if we hadn't worked that out, he probably would have just torpedoed the church idea, and he took care of that blight. It's not the city's.
They never installed the parking lot, if they were.
It's not the city's responsibility to say that we need to make it better, it's the city's responsibility to protect the property values of all constituents. It's not the city's responsibility to say, it needs, everyone needs to raise the ship. I don't know what that level is, but I think that's what we're struggling with, is I think some of us feel like we're trying to promote landscaping to make it better, and some of us say, well, it should just be to keep it status quo.
Take charge here, let's go.
Well, Jill, do you have anything else?
No, I will talk with Dean about the comments that we heard, and we'll work on something for your next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other old business or new business?
Point out real quick, this is kind of new business, we just reviewed site plan 21-03, I've got two other site plans that we're reviewing administratively pursuant to that change in ordinance last year to allow staff administrative review of permissible uses. I will forward those on once the site plans have been fully approved by staff, but there'll be, there's an expansion of industrial facility at HC Start, and then an apartment complex that we're taking those administrative reviews of, so.
Where is the apartment complex?
The apartment complex is behind the apartments of Sauk Trail, so it's a character circle area. So as soon as we have final site plans, I'll send those on to planning commission for your information.
Where is that at? Pass one?
Character circle, behind the apartments, behind Home Depot.
Oh, the other side there, the ones that never went up.
Yeah, and Aloha just reminded me that the developer of the senior housing at Franklin School was awarded, so that project's moving forward as well, the school is about half demolished at present, so it'll be another 48 units of senior housing in the future.
Can we get some more special use permits for retail marijuana stores?
I don't have.
I hope they're coming, we, they can't be, they can't be all.
So every application for a retail establishment that we've received so far has sought special use permission, everyone that's going to, so right now, we've got them all.
I hope it's.
How many is that total?
The one we heard tonight was the 14th.
That's what I thought.
Plus the groves.
Yep, the two groves and the one processor.
Processors having trouble with sewer and water, right?
I understand that they are having discussions with the utility about sewer and water.
Hard to deal with.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we are gone.
You're going to bring waiver language back, right?
I will bring back, what I want to work on for the future is the intent statement and waiver language, that I want to bring back so that we know why we're doing it, and how we grant exceptions to people that are doing something that fits into why, what we're trying to do, why.
But it can't be lacking us into only these situations, I think there's got to be discretion with this, with this commission, right? It can't be, it can't be a cookbook where we feel we can't do something because we don't, I think it's got to have some discretion.
It raining out, turn around.
I'm done.
It's raining, it's raining behind you.
Period funding, yeah, this rain hasn't been that much.
Hey, we're done.
Here, I'll let you recycle.
I know. Oh, is it? Yeah.
Need to work on my clothes.
Yeah, it actually was, I think it reinforced exactly what we were.
I sent you a photo, I'm a man that I'm asking, we're watching.
I couldn't see it.
Incentive waiver, I think that's where we need to go.
Oh, yes, it was nice to see you.
That was me just scribbling, brainstorming, so I know there's more out there, I know there's better ways of saying that.
It makes it look better.
Yeah.
Now, go back to the committee, where they should be, the first year, gee, I'm here.
Thanks for coming down, I hope that I'm not putting you back on the road in the middle of the storm. Yeah, well, this part of the state, you never know, because I think it hits the lake, and either shoots north or shoots south, so we'll get things that like Battle Creek doesn't get, or Rango that doesn't get, and vice versa, so. Okay, yeah, that's, October 4, I believe, so then we'll just try to firm up the language, have it ready for a public hearing and adoption at November, November is just later in the month because of elections.
November is just later in the month because of elections. Okay. I'm sorry? Sounds gusty.
Oh.
Glad I brought my...
I love your Google photo presentation. That was perfect.
I started taking pictures, but then I thought, you know what? You just do Google, and it's the same baseline. Now, the shame is, like, some of them, it's fall, and the trees don't have leaves on them, so that's a little frustrating, but, yeah, it was the best way I could think of doing it.
It was, it was stark and wood, that green versus the water and Angola.
Yeah. Now, I, to be fair, I think that Angola Dollar General is so old that it was just grandfathered in. But, you know, it's just trying to show, like, this is what ordinances can do, and this is what you'll get if you don't have them. I mean...